All right, before we get started on public. Here, before we have a speaker. The three minute time limit, only individual speaker. And our campaigner will be keeping, you know, once she starts and they keep the time. And when you hear, you don't do it on your phone, Kim?
Yes, sir.
And when you heard her phone ding, let me hear three minutes of the. All right. Dean Peacock. You would state your name and address, please.
Dean Peacock, seven two six West Austin Street, Silver City, North Carolina. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak today. I appreciate that. Regarding the expansion, I have spoken to a, you know, solid two residents and. Well, we're, they have all asked why is it not being put on the, if act about for the, remember, when you're coming. Pretty mad.
Uh, let me just think of this.
Yes, it's working. So my name is Dean Peacock. I live at seven six six West Austin Street, Silver City, North Carolina. I have spoken to a. Quite a few. Quite a few residents in Silver City, and they've asked why is it not. But I'm the ballot for the. Twenty one grand, let me see. Uh, the mayor's term, he paid. You know, the back question that I posed. Talking to quite people with that. With the long, I had the same concerns. And I just think it makes no sense to give the entirety of the panel, the votes. Would people do, but the ability. Decide, and we will just, uh. From a message, yeah, but that really gets me. Once again, I appreciate the time. I just needed to see something that a lot of people have expressed concern over. Yeah, this really, really picked up a part.
Thank you. Next, on the list, it's Rosemary Lins. He comes in volume and state your name and address, please.
President Mary Linsom, we go through Southmore Avenue, Silver City. As you know, tonight will be publicly voting. On extending the mayor's term to four years, that will take two. Before you take that vote, I respectfully ask that each one of you commissioners look at yourselves and look at your fellow commissioners. Now, I'm asking you, what do you have in common? May not come up with a quick answer, but we suggest one point. We have two people tonight on our board who have spent most of their working life in the field of education. We also have two people here tonight. Who spent most of their working life as employees of the town Silver City. We have one who works in retail for a small local firm. We have one who works in technology for a well-known company, but he works remotely from home. And we have one who spent most of his life either in a classroom or preparing for food. So what does that mean that you all have in common? Let me suggest to me, it means that none of you have any significant. Work experience with industry, especially at the corporate level. That's not meant as a criticism, definitely not, but it is a fact. So I'm asking, do you really understand how exactly does the corporate level think? Before they consider we even can solve the issue of our medicine. I'd like to suggest a few things that they think about. They look at the road network. Does our medicine site offer roads that are adequate to hook up with major interstate? Yeah, we certainly do. Forty, eighty-five, ninety-five already available. What about water? So thanks to your wisdom, we have added more coming to the site by way of. Ashwell. What about schools? But their children get a decent education. I believe in them. I honestly think if they apply themselves, they can go to any college they wish to. What about the workforce? Well, because of Central Carolina Community College, new skills can be learned by anybody willing to apply themselves. And therefore, I'm giving that a check of whether. Taxes, they're reasonable. Industry doesn't necessarily object to the tax rate. Then, the next question they ask is, what about Silver City's civic government? Can't we expect to have a continuity? With whoever represents the civic government of Silver City? They look at the term of service of each commissioner, and they see that they're elected for four years. And they look at the end of the mayor, and they see, like I say, he's only here for two years. So it's one one. That's a red flag to me.
Time.
Industry does not want uncertainty. And they ask themselves, our city's on here with uncertainty, if we can build a public authority, well, now.
Will you stop?
Please consider. Thank you for your vote.
All right, uh. Next, Jimmy P. You come up and state your name and address, please.
All right. My name is Jimmy Q of the Silver City, three thirty, One More Street. Okay, what are the odds of what just happened? What's gonna happen? I'm here to like to present to the board commissioners. A petition for the citizens of Silver City around that area. With a concern about the mayor's term changing from two to four years. We think some of this deal has to be decided by the people. By your constituency, if you have promised to serve and take care of, to come and bring. So I have brought this into the, uh, the offer today. I'm pretty sure you got a copy. Well, this is something we think ought to be on the ballot in November twenty twenty-three, to be decided. By the citizens, who puts you where you are now. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jimmy. All right, uh, next up is Mr. Don Matthews.
Don Matthews, twelve street, Silver City, North Carolina. Good evening, this is Mayor and Commissioner. Uh, House Bill two fifty-two, I'm sure you all know what that is. You've already extended to the North Carolina Legislature. It is already passed the first reading. You did hire a candidate. I think here, hey, and just around this, this young lady before me that laid out an excellent. Very excellent idea of how it should work. And I'm not against it, though, because there was four years, but what I have to say is you still have to. What we must do and what we need to do is let citizens have a say in how this is done. And for all of you that want our interest, if you go to North Carolina Legislature, stand. It's House Bill two fifty-two, and at the bottom of the page, you can make an up and down comment. I just did it. And the comment basically was, I'm not against it, but the citizens should be allowed to vote. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Matthew. All right, next up is Pamela Hall. You come up and state your name and address, please.
My name is Pamela Hall. I live at nineteen seventy-six, there's a basketball road in Silver City, which is in the E T J. And I am here today because I believe that governance is an issue for the people to decide. So while I appreciate that corporations are looking for things, uh, the people have a decision to make too. So I just hope you take the comments that are coming and realize that people would like to see this from the government. And that's, it's their decision to make. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is Chelsea Barbie.
My name is Chelsea Barbie, eleven seven oh two, North Carolina. And I feel like the mayor, maybe from two years to four years, is without an issue. I don't think that it's in the best interest of your constituents to just vote tonight and change it. I think that should be given to the peoples. That could be our right, but that will not, or it might, see, whichever you want to choose. So that is all I have to say, that I do want to consider putting it on the ballot. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Barbie. Next up is Gail Matthews.
Good evening, Mayor, and I'm here to remind us on the platform, all of you. Our world has changed and is changing. I like the idea that we want to change the two year, four year. But I don't think that with way through the changes in our earth, I think it's good to let us have our same domain and speak our piece. And keep it on the ballot. I think it's only right. If we start doing one thing and changing it to another way, that means lots of things are going to change behind the door. And we don't want that. We want to give us have our place and freedom. I think we're here, we need to, uh, work it out.
Well, thank you, Ms. Matthews. Uh, next is Dennis D. St. Alton. There, there you go. Love to give your name and address, please, sir.
Dennis D. St. Alton, five seventy-six, time four, stride. Actually, if we flip it from the commissioner's speech, two years and the mayor's before, that's actually that are not ending, but. Anyhow, I do believe that after the four-year mayor's term is very important to continue, especially with the new industry coming to Silver City. And how we choose to do it. Uh, I think this four years, one capable of continuing that, but stuff today. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Miss St. Alton. Uh, next up is Sandy Dameron. Give your name and address, please.
I'm Sandy Dameron, one one, the four U I five, right, this is for the, I, I am interested to say. And I'm going to be real brief. I know you guys are above our whole, well, heads of, you've all brought this up for this public hearing now. When you did not have to, you did it because you chose to. Legislature does not require it be done in a public hearing. And it does not require anything but you guys decide. And all of you were elected by the people, and you made many, many other decisions for the people. And when you brought this up originally, the courtroom was empty because people don't come to here and support you like they should. And input you like they should. They rely on you to make the best decisions for Silver City. So any decision you make tonight, you are voting for the people. Okay, you make decisions every day, every meeting, for example. Four-year terms consistency is key to a good, strong government. Uh, first year, you're getting adjusted to the ways of the board. The second year, you're at work. The third year of your work, you're getting forced, you're, you're campaigning again like everybody else. But you need more than two years to settle in and make good decisions for this town, for any town. Uh, any decisions that you make to your terms, because don't give you the advantage or the knowledge you need to be in that position. So, um, and for whether it needs to go before the public, no, it doesn't. Legislature says it does not. You all chose it, you said you all wanted input, and that you have the right to make that decision. It does not need to go before, before we vote.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dameron. All right. All right, that's all for the program, speaking to the public.
I put my name on that list. Oh, no, you, you put it on the, uh, the one for, um, the, uh, conditionally something. Is it okay if I speak for this part? And that was, yeah, I think that's, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, we just transferred it off.
Okay.
You really come up and state your name and address, please.
My name is Alan Cowler. I live at four eighteen, West Dalton Street. Uh, currently, there's a discussion about extending Silver City's narrow term to two to four years. To be frank, I didn't realize that it was a two-year term in our current charter. Jimmy McCloud, the people head of Life of America, four-year term. For the past few decades, Silver City has not seen a significant amount of growth, and perhaps during that past time, the two-year term may have been appropriate. As many of you know, slow growth is not in our future, rather we are likely to see rapid growth in our town. This growth should be accompanied by continuity of our political leadership. A mayor has supervision of many projects that would go well beyond two years' span. Undoubtedly, will speed will be over four years eventually. In addition to will speed, the wastewater project won't be completed until January twenty twenty-five, that's according to N C policy law. Uh, under our current setup, both the spread of projects may. May have, may not have contiguous political leadership. If projects, or excuse me, if something doesn't work out, for example, the water title isn't limited until the end of twenty twenty-six. How will the constituency hold those responsible to account? There will be many projects such as housing expansion that may be contingent on the completion of this project. Accountability is a product longer term, especially when it happens to be two consecutive tests. I sincerely doubt will speed will pull out if they have, um, well, if they have from the strength of our account political leadership. However, Silver City could easily gain an infamous reputation of being a town that is inhospitable to new business and economic growth. If our politicians are truly incompetent, chances are good that we will not know until they have finished their term. In office and are doing something entirely different in Silver City all the time. It is of my opinion that the most important detail of a politician's time in office isn't time length, but rather term limits. Term limit of two terms, either consecutive or not, should be mandatory for all politicians. This is especially true of bureaucrats who are unaccountable to the people. The majority of cities across the nation have. Uh, two, two-term, uh, mayor, mayor term, see, they have four years as well as term limits. Silver City, Silver City should be no different. We already have a tremendous problem of accountability at the state and federal level. Prevent us from having the same problem within our own municipal government.
We can win it out. All right. Any other comments?
Yeah, actually, I'd like to make a comment. Um, so the, the first of all, I think, um, what I'd like to, I'd like to address first, I, I think. Uh, Mr. Matthews brought up that we're trying to shove something down their, down their throats, and I, I think that's, that's not quite correct. Uh, I think the, the leg, the North Carolina Legislative Calendar dictated when we could and couldn't. Um, you put a public, or put a, um, a local bill into the legislature. If we had, if we hadn't done it when we did, then we wouldn't be able to get it on the calendar if we had gotten public, public input that said, yes, please go do that. And then if we, we turn around, if it's not the public input, and it's not, we decide that we don't want to do it. We still have time to, to recommend or ask that be, would be withdrawn. So it's not a done deal, uh, as, as some have said. I just want to set the record straight there.
And there's, there's one thing that, um, I, I don't know if it's clear or not. Uh, I don't know if it's talked about. We talked about it during the board meeting. Is that, uh, this expansion of the mayor's term does not take effect until after the, the next election. It has anything to do with anybody's current city or on their, it would only affect whoever is the next mayor. But I don't know if that was, that was the issue, and I know we talked about it. I know we talked about it. Um. Things in time, um.
I just, I would echo your statements. Uh, we had this public hearing because we wanted people's input. If we don't want to shove it down, we could have done all the data, and then nobody was here, because usually going in. But we had this public hearing for the purpose of getting the people's info. Um, we will have a certain deadline, like Bill said, and if you can, you know, legislature, that's why H P two thousand two is there. That doesn't mean that we weren't concerned about your, your voice. But that was entirely opposite, and that's why we had this public hearing.
Is there any?
When, when you want to make a motion, I, I, all we gotta go, get a close, get a close public hearing.
Yeah, you might have got a comment.
Well, actually, I do have, so what, um, so, um, for William, when, when, what is, what would be the procedure if we chose to put it on, to ask to put it on the ballot?
First, let me just say that no matter what, how you see, the people fifty-two. For the path, there is a statute or a procedure where citizens can petition for certain chartering. And this would be one of them, which they don't lose, you know, and that's always an opportunity, and so I thought I'd point that out. But the other alternative, uh. One alternative is to go to ask for a local bill, which is what we did, the same, we made it out of the Senate to do that, but. You as a board still wanted to hear from the public, as, as you have said, so you sort of combined the two methods. For a charter member, which is fine. Uh, we wanted to hear from the folks, even though you asked for a local bill. Uh, but the other way would have been to, this, the term, you all's terms, the name of them, board members. Is one of about seven things that you can do a charter member for, uh, as a town board. Uh, that's retarded, things that you can change by the general standard, but. The terms, and things like the name, and the town, when you develop initiatives or all of them. There are certain things like that, and you can change that ordinance, and that sets in play a series of, of events. Uh, you can even choose to put it out on a public referendum. Or not. And if you don't, then within thirty days of your vote on the ordinance amended, the charter. The petition, the, the ten percent of the voter, registered voters of the jurisdiction of Silver City. Is received, then you have to vote to a referendum anyway, so. That procedure probably could be done in.
So are you saying we have to vote on it as ordinance order for the people to be able to get it on the referendum ballot, as a referendum ballot?
No, the, the people can always get together and organize a, uh, petition seeking, uh, charter of him. Of a limited number of items, one, two, charter. And irrespective of it being considered by people, they can just organize and write a petition and ten percent of the vote. And force a referendum on a number of different things dealing with charter. The other thing is, had you chosen to, rather than to ask for the state's blessing by way of a local bill, you could have done. By way of an ordinance amendment yourself and changed to four-year term. Uh, and that would have started the block thirty days, thinking about which. A petition could be presented by ten percent of the citizens, and it would be a referendum. Or you could have, as part of that ordinance, held that it was going to be subject to a referendum.
I guess my question is.
There's two different places to do it by ordinance. There's one, and then there's one way, ask legislation for it, and then there's a third way that the citizens can just ask for, regardless of it being.
But it sounds like there's no way to put a referendum ballot without having ordinance.
Right. Except for a citizen's decision.
Right, but not by the board.
Mission not being timely until after.
But it, but in order for the board to get on the ballot, we got to do an ordinance.
Right.
So if we, if we were to pass an ordinance, then, then it would go to a referendum in, this November?
If you judge or that, or there's a petition, there's a challenge, citizens, or chain in. Requesting.
Okay.
That ten percent of the citizens registering for those things, but all of this, then.
Yep.
And this is the, yes. Anyway. But that, if you were to change here and put it that way now, that would make the local bill requested, obviously, that.
Right. Right, which, you know, and, and the referendum would be, if we were to do the referendum, that would be in Nov- i- in November, but it wouldn't take effect until the twenty twenty-five elections, which is saying.
Right.
Okay, but regard, well, I mean, assuming the outcome of the referendum was in positive. Okay. Right.
That answers the question.
Yeah, it does. It does.
Yeah, so we, we close it. I think we can close. What was it like that said?
No, I was shaking my head, thinking, I'm gonna agree with Bill.
Okay.
Do we need more discussion on it?
Yeah, so I'll see if he might add any more discussion about. Is Israel, not, we'll close public hearing.
In lieu of the response, public responses and the petitions, I want to make a motion. For an alternative approach that will honor the Silver City voters and then decide on a member. That we place a referendum on the November town ballot. That asks voters whether the Silver City mayor should be elected a four-year term. Any change would, of course, be effective at the next election in twenty twenty-five.
We can place it correctly on, on the ballot.
If we, we have to pass an ordinance, probably, then that is.
Right, that's not a question.
Right.
We have to pass an ordinance, I think, to adopt the four-year term. And then, I think they, ten percent of the population.
They don't have to, we can, they, you know, we can, we can pass an ordinance and, and put it in and ask to put it on the rest, just straight on.
By the way, if you did it that route, you'd have had enough of here.
Yep.
To, to, to approve the ordinance.
Okay.
Well, should we ask town staff to draft some language? Uh, and get that ready, and then we do, like, and get a, they know the public hearing.
Yeah, that's what I think is all we do. Yeah, okay.
Well, let me just say this, that when you're considering the orders, if that, if that's the right, that when you're considering the orders. You will make a determination whether or not to set it for public, referendum or not. It would not be appropriate to. To do that, and be premature to do that.
How, how should we, how should the motion be worded then?
Yeah.
Well, right now, we can just have a motion to, to deny a resolution. And then Edward, then we can rebrand.
Okay.
And then, and then town staff could, could get some language for an ordinance?
Yes. It'd be very similar to what is in that resolution, doesn't matter, just you might have done it still, so then if you get to the ballot. It did.
Okay.
I guess I need to.
For a could, it could or it will. Then what you do after the next public hearing, when you adopt the ordinance, to change it for years.
Okay.
You can ask section two to that, you can say, and the board give out, uh, or days that are good, referendum in November twenty twenty-three. Or we can leave that off, and then nothing will come up with a petition, and we can get on that one.
But we can't, we can't table this and do the ordinance, but have to take this at the same time? Can you have, can you have them pending at the same time?
I think so, because there, we have, because the two fifty-two is already passed the first reading, we'd have to, we'd have to, we'd have to, um, deny this ordinance and ask them to, to, to table two fifty-two.
That's correct, this, the motion, the majority wants to go that route, the motion is non-resolution. Which that resolution asked your local representatives to introduce the local appeal, but we, you know, we got all of our headlines, just a little, we all noted it, so we asked them, we had to play for our end, but sure.
Yeah.
So, well. Yeah, just to make a motion.
We got a motion, second, in discussion, about the motion. All who is in favor, see you five us, bring your hand.
I think we're pretty much.
All who oppose, like, sign the motion carries. Now over there.
I think, I think the next, I think the next thing is to, uh, have staff go back and draft and, draft a resolution for an ordinance.
You got that, Hank?
And you can make sure you put language.
Yes, placing on a ballot in twenty twenty-three.
Well, yes.
All right.
That's a consensus.
That's consensus.
All right, you're good, thanks. All right, let's move on to the next, uh, session here, uh.
This is the Liberty Hill, um, public hearing.
Okay, here it is. All right, uh, at this point in time, open the public hearing on Liberty Hill LLC. The meeting is open.
Good evening, um, we just have a team of planning directors for the town of South Shady. First item of organized discussion is case R twenty-three, that zero three zero one, for George Hudson Road. The owner of the property is Liberty Hill LLC, the applicant is Mr. Jose Gomara. The request is for additional reselling of two-lab agricultural residential to residential new practical park. The properties are addressed as two fifteen, two seventeen, two nineteen, and two twenty-one, George Hudson Road, and are approximately six point zero six one acres. The planning board heard this case, um, last Monday, and recommended that the town council that he denied his request. As we can see from the subject property map, the property is located to the east of Silk Road and to the north of George Hudson Road. The zoning map shows that this area, this property is currently zoned as agricultural residential, as well as surrounding area. This property is located in the, um, extra, extraterritorial areas, for the town of South. Future land use map calls for this area to remain, to develop that low density residential. This would, this development for a local home park will be considered high density residential, due to the size of acreage and the potential for the amount of homes that could be placed on the lot. The applicant, this is a site plan for, for the development, um, he is proposing right now to have four, uh, manufactured homes on the property. There will be two on the front portion and two on the rear portion. Um, I can note that this, um, case did come to the board as part of a code enforcement violation. Um, this is.
Is that two on track five and two on track four?
Yes, sir. This came, um, to, is coming to the board as part of a code enforcement violation. Um, the applicant in this site is currently, um, being cited for placing the, this more home, more homes on the lot without changing the permits from the town or from, um, Chatham County. The option before the board tonight is to approve and, um, say that it is inconsistent with the future land use plan or deny instead that it is inconsistent with the future. Their staff have a location for this evening, or they're in, uh, in, or the chair. Um, he has said that by the board, not directly recommended on the night, the coming from.
It was unanimous, both, both, uh.
Yes.
Eight to none.
Yes.
Okay. We'll get down to game that way. You become, uh, you name and address, and like we have before, it'll be a three-minute panel.
Well, thank you for your service for the town of Southern City, appreciate it. My name is James Battle, I live at twenty-two forty-two Silk Road. Our proximity is one property away from the proposed site and trailer park. Um, there are a few things that I want to mention just briefly that I mentioned at the last meeting. I'm certainly not an expert in sewage, but when you're talking about putting forty-four to sixty mobile homes on a six acre tract land, I can't imagine that it would not affect the water, that would not impact the livestock, and because it is surrounded by agricultural livestock animals, uh, I have a real problem with that. I think, secondly, when you look at George Hudson Road and Silk Road, my personal opinion is that if you put forty-four mobile homes, and there's even two cars to each one, or a car and a half, I just don't believe the infrastructure of George Hudson Road and Silk Road is going to be able to support the busing and traffic from that mobile home. I think finally, and this is my real concern, and I think most of you can identify with this. I was doing some research after the last meeting, and I think my number one concern is the number of pieces and analyses that I read concerning the impact of a, a mobile home park on residential communities. This particular one that I'm going to cite from tonight was entitled, "The Review of Urban and Regional Development Studies." The subtitle was, "The Impact of Manufactured Housing on Red Ane- Adjacent Residential Property Values. A GIS Approach Based on Three North Carolina Counties." Now, none of those counties is Chatham, to be fair, but they're in North Carolina, and I think that the results of these speak for themselves. I quote, "The statistical analyses revealed that proximity to a manufactured home influences value of nearby site-built residential properties. Estimated property values show that the further away from a manufactured home, the higher the site-built property value, all other things being equal." It goes on to say that they found that single-family houses located near manufactured housing communities had lower property values than those located, located farther from these communities. Other researchers have found similar patterns. And then it says, and this goes on one step further, uh, I'm not a prophet, but it is theorized that lots in close proximity to mobile home communities may have higher concentrations of crime for the likely reasons as some research suggests the presence of mobile home communities.
Yes, sir, thank you, it was bad one. All right, uh, next, Kristen Hudson.
Good evening. I'm here, my name is Kristen Hudson, I'm here for my mother, Barbara Hudson, also for my aunt Joyce Bowers, uh, on thirty-four George Hudson Road, with, with, with possibly one of the songs. Um, first, I'd like to point out that Liberty Hill LLC is already in violation of the current code, and we're all here because of the court, the code enforcement, um, that is brought against them. I'd like to leave the application, um, the way that I understand it, this, Mr. Colera, the Liberty LLC, um, it wasn't compliant until he brought two additional mobile homes onto the property. There, according to the memorandum, this statute dated March thirteenth, thousand twenty-three, section one thirty-six, one forty-six of the U D O states that you can have accessory dwellings, but only in the primary structure, is site-built or a modular home. It did not make any on any of the problems, currently, there's only mobile homes there, therefore, it makes it inconsistent with zoning. According to the planning board memorandum, well, the permits were obtained in nineteen ninety-seven for two mobile homes. Uh, additional permits have not been obtained for the additional mobile homes that have been moved onto property. The capacity is not there for the well, for the existing well, that's due to incidents. On my understanding, that the possible, the possibility, excuse me, it is my understanding that the possible density of this project makes the zoning inconsistent with the future land use plan, which recommends the rural residence area be developed as low density residential. In addition, looking at the general warranty, there is approximately fourteen additional acres on top of the six acres that we're talking about now. Um, the additional fourteen acres could then add an additional hundred mobile homes in that same area. So on top of the six acres, it's fourteen acres, so they own twenty acres, they can move a hundred and forty-four mobile homes in twenty acres. It's also my understanding, um, that in order for the planning board to approve this, we're zoning to residential mobile homes, and any fact, home park community owners must request innovation. Um, if, if this is consistent with the law, law related plan for, by the city, and it's feasible to bring the water and sewer all the way out there, I'm not aware of that. Um, hence, I think it should be denied. Denying reasons of post-adoption.
Thank you, Mrs. Hudson. Right. Next, Joyce Val. You take your name and address, please.
Joyce Val, four twenty-eight, four Hudson. How many of you displace, George Hudson, North St. Andrew's, or on? And I won't take a bunch of town, but I think it was more to say, the England, I think they planned it last week, currently, we'll get a plan, and it's a, it's a line phrase. They probably will go forward, and you can use the details and specifications. It's kind of moving on. And I don't think we'll be settled, set off, um, nail boxes after and put them up, you can just did things, we started things, and they pulled into Oklahoma. I don't think we, you have to remember, look at the suspected, suspected issues. I would like to keep this a beautiful agricultural residential land, which stay away here, still go. And my daughter's here, and then we'll work together.
Next up, Barbara Hudson. Name and address, please.
Box eleven, we were there for sixty-one years. That was, yeah, that's about the bottom of us. And I'm with you on, you could go, I don't believe in the city road, and I'm happy to see that turning in the north twenty-four. One of the mobile homes that was already on that property, in the, which doesn't follow me that enough now. But prior to the one that's over there, there was a lot of shooting, and, um, no, not, and that was downstairs, and we didn't know. Thank you for the help.
Great, thank you, Mr. Hudson. Next up, Ed Spitt.
My name is Ed Smith, here at twenty-seven hundred Silk Road. Most of the land that, uh, if you don't like the way it is moved out, but you change exactly. And I don't think that that property would support second amendment for a large number of mobile homes. Or, or not will, how's that one, I mean, well, to the ones that have turned the dollar apart. Or they're gonna make the town the county water. I just felt like this would be a good idea for our self-advocative committee, I do.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Uh, Harold and Caitlin Dora.
My name is Carol Barker, my daughter Caitlin, we live on Bowles and Red's office, but we're here for, my father-in-law, working for the state, we're here for the state. Okay, um, the people, they met for the topic, I'll call them like lawyers. Hello, uh, so, we were at the.
Yeah.
My name is Caitlin, I live at seventy-five thousand Road. Uh, we live there, and we're, we're visiting my grandfather, Chris Thomas, Jr., at three eighty-two, fourth. Uh, the other, last week, something that the representative, the developer said, uh, caught my attention. He said, if you plant this, it'll affect it, it'll be for low income housing. And I want to say that you're not against low income housing, this is a low income area, so I believe, and, um, however, we've seen something like this happen on, 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 uh, about ten years or so, a mobiles moved in, next door to my grandfather's house, and it did not have, um, any kind of acid or water, sewage, or electrical, you know, to, to meet the needs of, of, of a certain standard of living that people deserve. And everyone on the road, they, one that they were, they were getting very concerned, first went on, and it was clear that this place was deteriorating, because it was not being taken care of. These basic necessities for life were not being met, uh, so my grandparents and my father, all of the enforcement from, I think, the senior department, um, maybe they're worried because he either was small children living there, because it was, uh, for, he was doing that for friends he had, as well as the power. But unfortunately, a lot of times, people would do that and take care of the load within the town, that they're not going to have a plan. Uh, the tenants were then, uh, had to vacate the house because it became unlivable, the trailer has been sitting there for years, bringing down the value of the neighborhood already. And we are seeing this happen again, beginning of this happening, handle this one off. And we are seeing this happen again, beginning of this happening, handling this falling off with new development and this mobile home community coming in. Because they're already cutting corners. I mean, they're already, the only reason I can think about this is because they violated code, they cut permits, so they actually needed to do a lot of legal buying by the law. And there are cutting corners here, where else are we going to be cutting corners? Wow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next, Mr. Steve Moore. Can I give you your name and address, please?
Three four five up in Park Road. I'm not here to put concern, I only have three things.
Before he gets on the dirt by then.
Hold up, but yeah, turn this down. Um, can you bring that solid map back up? I'll be real brief. All five acres connected to this piece of property, not that map, this long map. Now, you can see there's a five acre tract right beside, just to the right there of this piece of property that I own, I do not real estate. There's only five point three acres, it's not much, but it's all I have. And that would really be valued that property. And I would ask you to go along with the recognition of the committee last week, as you know, must not result. That's all I can say, in conclusion.
Steve, you better not let your congregation know you didn't preach for three minutes, because you might have said a president, right? No, who plays it nine oh nine or twelve street? I didn't make out the name, I'm sorry.
Is, um, I'm standing here before the mayor and of these individuals, not all my help. But I do know that as fire and sun comes into our neighborhood, it doesn't fit. And not here that I fit neighborhood, but so I spoke up on my neighborhood. So I think we all work together, some of this, uh, the neighborhood. Kill the issue. This thing ran with their neighborhood. It's a smell, and it's a tomato, so I think we all have to work together to make sure the solid city is a community that we all want to live here. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Uh, next up, Mary Lee Cole. Ms. Cole? You don't wish to speak, did you? Okay, all right. Give us your name and address, please, ma'am.
And I already experienced some of the problems in my neighborhood that comes along in very much on the Hudson Road. And so, bringing in more people that are in our who are human, then I think it's just unbelievable. And I just think that nobody destroys their foot. But if the elevator, the main town law, where the most people build it up, and then if you there's in there, and there's no standards, and then obviously, right? Then you don't have to. It's hard to predict that it could go well.
Thank you, Ms. Cole. Next, Divas. Take your name and address, please.
Yes, I'm City Mayor, uh, one seventy-eight Brutus Road, Red. I live, uh, Mrs. Fox, Red. Uh, Mrs. Pike is very good with my home. Have any of y'all seen these mobile homes that have been building? You have?
Yes, sir. I just wrote through, Mr. Smith.
I would want to be up there and think that they look like Indian community demolished. I mean, they're, uh, I mean, it would be a little bit different if it was something decent. But there, but these things look awful. And the thing that I'm gonna be, every time I go out on my front porch, I'm gonna go straight across the river to get these things. Other thing, you know, that some of that has gone back to Farmer's Day. I mean, I think it would hurt people coming from all over the state about syrup, right? Uh, the visit, don't actually farm today. I don't think this is going to be something that, uh, that's going to help help the visibility of our community there. Uh, you know, some of that road I can sit in my den and and look into traffic, and I'm just amazed. I've always built in that community, uh, in years and years. Just amazed that how much traffic is on that road already. Uh, and we had that much more traffic doing this, will be a problem. I haven't learned anything to be able to say. I have beautiful pieces of land, uh, I love and, uh, the seeds and agriculture used. And I just stand so and see, uh, what it will prosper in the mobile home park there.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Jay Bright. You come up and give us your name and address, please.
Jay Bright, I live five seven, four two, best brother. Um, I have an early son, he's here at the Steel Co. Service, and they're already terrible, hence why I'm giving it a guy. I don't think I have any trouble on, gonna help out. Well, soon, then I know one fourth of the guy, and other one, third of the bar, because of the city, so.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bright. Uh, next is Nita Dukes. Oh, okay. Right. I think I see it, that was the one that was going wrong sheet. All right. Any comments in the board? Any questions to answer?
Mr. David is not here.
I have generally, is that been here? Evidently not, I hear nothing. Okay. Okay.
I have, I have a question. So, uh, in looking at the packet, it, it talked about the, somebody was talking about the code enforcement, uh, the violations. Did they do anything with those, uh, even just looking at the mobile homes that were in there, uh, going back somewhat as far as the condition of the home?
Yeah.
Um, but the case is still open and that is still approving penalties with the violation, you know. Are, are the homes available? Are they just there?
They are there. They are not put up because they have not received, they have not received, applied or received any permits from Chatham County or from the town to have those still on there. So, yes, Mr. Barrera, I know he's been reached out to, but has he made comments or anything to? What, what he, he's waiting on the outcome of this rezoning. Um, if he, if he is successful, then he would have to do the zoning permits through town and then do the building, um, permits and everything through Chatham County. Doesn't have any future plans as far as what he, what he planned for us to do with the land if it were changed. He has none, so.
Has he expressed one way or another, or has he been solid?
He has none, so one way or one way or another, he will, if, if he is not successful, he will have to move those trailers or continue to incur penalties for not being equipped. What about the extra two that he brought in? There's the two that's later on referred to. He would have to move the two, um, the two homes that were not permitted to be placed, he would have to move those off. The other two were grandfathered in because they were placed there, perhaps it's one of the ones. So with any value given, there's those two, as in that one. We know the condition of that, that's. They're not great. Okay.
Can I speak to those? On the home, I think that's fine. Can I speak to that? I didn't think I want three minutes.
Okay, thanks, Dave. If any more questions? And if I can reiterate, the planning board voted eight zero to deny.
Yes, sir.
All right. No other questions? Okay, I move the public hearing proposal.
I'm making a motion to deny the ordinance admitting the official zoning map and further that action is inconsistent with the adopted L D P because one, residential is recommended for certain property to these areas of low density development that are either environmentally sensitive or located in the, setting to the service of town. Minimum lock side, it's the one able to bring her and bring the L D P recommends limits on, on development on the environment to promote sustainability. And four, they encourage agricultural use of the land.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the, um, motion say aye. All those opposed like sign. The motion carries. Okay. Next up, uh, we'll open this public hearing. Yes, take Miss Scott LLC rezoning. So we'll open the public hearing. So.
Good evening. This is page R twenty-three, day zero three oh two, Greenboro Avenue. This request is being presented by the owner, David C. Dot O. C. The applicant is Kate, uh, Doctor, a veterinarian, medicine. The request is to rezon from R ten, Highway Commercial, conditional for, um, two parcels of land. One is addressed as eleven fourteen Greenboro Avenue. And the second parcel is an unaddressed parcel on Greenstone Avenue. Both parcels combined are a total of one point six one acres. The subject property is located in the north of Newus Highway fifty-four and to the east of Greenboro Avenue. According to the zoning map, it is currently exiled as residential in. Um, applicants seeking to rezon to Highway Commercial in which Highway Commercial is located to the north, east, I mean, north, south, and west of the property. To the east is another residential tenant building in it, but this property is part of Martin Paul. So the name is May House, but in the area to be, um, developed as high density residential. So if this fashion did move, it would be amended to the name as well. That can supply the same plan that applicants seeking to construct a new building on the underdressed parcel of Greenboro Avenue. She's attempting to leave the existing building, uh, for possible, um, uh, for possible maintenance in the future. The existing building was constructed in the nineteen eighty, so it's a little bit dated. And applicants are seeking to build a new building to prioritize her. Again, the plan, um, which is being followed unanimously, uh, it's zero to approve. Um, there's been something, and the options tonight are to approve, finding a consensus in the potential name's map or deny and find a. That's that presentation. Um, the applicant is present to the rest of the board.
Miss Scott, can you come up? Your name and address, please.
I'm Dr. Kate Scott, owner of Academy Service, have long on four three four Avenue. I live in seventeen fifty-one, member of Gray Road, fifth. Been a veteran of practice at that location for well over fifty years. Been here long enough, you know, got a practice like fifty thirty-sixties for the original thirteen hundreds for the building. You're versing that things. So this is step one, uh, to go ahead and get it rezoned as it should be for part of the use of the residential. We would have to continue to expand the business. Here tonight, I have a question.
Go for this, Scott.
I mean, it, it makes sense.
I don't think that building ever used for a house, even. Doghouse, maybe. So, all right, nobody else signed up to speak? Lock or close the public hearing?
Motion to approve the ordinance amending the official zoning map and further that the action is inconsistent with the adopted, uh, future land use map. Because the, uh, W P recommends and encourages development in areas with existing or planned infrastructures such as water, sewer, roads, and sidewalks and to improve the appearance of properties. In that song, bring B and C on page one. And then on page two, T V C, encourage attractive commercial development in appropriate locations suitable for market purposes. And for the warrants or approved ordinance amending the adopted future land use.
Second. All right, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Is any further discussion about the motion? Not one of the wishes in the board, say goodbye by saying aye. All those opposed like sign. And the motion carries. It's gonna be able to do a new doghouse. Okay. All right. Next up, O B.
It's the, the email that you sent?
Yeah, with the background.
All right. Hold on one second. Let me send it to the whiteboard. This is, um, the case, um, for the mural on Alberta Avenue. The owner of the property is E J M D Holding LLC. The applicant is Donald Matthews. They're funded for an active bank approval for a ten-foot tall by sitting below by a mural located at one twenty-seven South Burton Avenue.
It's, it's not, it's not safe yet. It's in the same PowerPoint?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
According to the roadmap, the original side of the original site was just a thing thing in the wall. Eventually, the applicant um committed and got approval to paint a mural on the side of the building. Since that time, the mural has been refreshed and a new mural was painted um over the old one. This picture is dated from February of twenty twenty-three. The applicant is coming to request an empty bag for approval for the new mural um replaced with.
On the mural, um it is is established before you put a mural, you're supposed to get that uh permit to do that, right? Yeah, and there's no cost to the permit, right? And you got the permit for the original ones. The couple of things I just want to point out there, I was gonna say, the new mural looks better than the than the old. The color scheme and everything is good, it looks a lot better than the old. And one of the things with the mural goes back to the. The mural, mural uh society was, you know, developed in all its nature. One of the things that uh the freshman of everything was that. The murals that were painted be historical and be accurate. And the um mural, I'm just a little bit of checking on some of the. The mural with its currently updated painting, it is accurate, uh except for one thing. Down there, all of all of people, the faces and everything are accurate, folks down there, everything is. But if you look in the lower right hand corner of the, in the package holder of the picture that was on there. You see a street sign over there. And two streets with streets that are on there, I. I I don't think there's the streets in South City by that that night, and um. So that one little thing right there takes away from the historical value. I read what I like to ask uh Mr. Matthews is uh can that be changed? On on that, just that part, the rest of it's fine.
And uh Mr. Matthews spent quite a bit of time on it. At a time I didn't know that he was actually trying to tell us. Because when he said what was holding our raise months, all this other, that's very good. Now, the first mural that is put there was not. What we wanted are what we paid. Now, if we were out of order and uh replacing that. There's three people on his way with that, no. These young people were down there every week. There's not a slowing down, you know, not one. So to come back now and you're only crying. Street signs.
Mr. Matthews, it's not, it's not a gripe. It's not a gripe. It's not a gripe, Mr. Mr. Matthews. All the murals, if you go around and look at them, historically red and accurate. If you could, tell me the names that are on there, what do they apply to, where where do those names come from?
Actually, by the group, they're done. Citizens in Action, and I'm not sure what the other side is.
Uh yeah, okay, and. It looks like to me that on that sign, on that sign, it it should, if it was historically accurate. It would say Birch Avenue or Beaver or Raleigh Street, which is the two streets that, or the three streets. That go to that particular community.
There is a rule down town, this cycle dealing, can you tell me what the historical preferences there?
Which one?
This kind of cycle dealing call, can you tell me what the historical preferences there?
I think you talk about rabbits here, because rabbits cross words.
And all now, and there's so many other things that you're going to concentrate on. You want to concentrate on an historical mural. And matter of fact, the man who's the art. Left of that picture, if you want to be historically accurate. Mister Todd Edward Senior. Was the first jewelry store in his town here. He was the first American town here, but guess what? He was not the first. We honor him by being the first. So I don't understand why or where the issue is. This Baptiste, I signed a paperwork, and all of our knew it was over. The I just came back from signing the paperwork, she said, I would not expect to come up with today. To talk about this story. Why I had to pay, what this I was first time I find. But it could send a gender.
Well, and with any, with any permit that you gotta get, there's a discussion. Period, and you know, look at lots of time to go through the planning board like what we just done. But uh this particular one is not, and everything on here is fine, except for that one thing, and that's that. Those two things that are on that sign, not historical to even South City. Because there are no streets in South City by that name.
Sometimes artists take liberty and it was found above. And it is representative of the group that we've got the the mass.
And 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 I and I agree with Matthews, I think that um that, you know, artists do often put their signatures in, you know, in paintings. They do it in a way that sort of fits in with it. I don't have condition in community and, you know, frankly, community pride, I mean, while it looks, it's a street sign. I think we're we're talking about, and we're talking about pride and communities, I I don't I don't that the situation. I mean, I understand the historical accuracy, understand the situation, but I think in in this time, this kind of an instance. The, you know, the community pride references, you know, that that area that was of of birch.
Well, maybe so, but didn't one of those you say was, isn't it the name of a group, your group? Well, let me ask you this, where do we, if we're gonna put names, roots on murals, where do we start? Because there's, there's all kinds of other groups that would probably like to have their name. Yeah, that's fine, that's that's all that we. And if this, if you'd gotten this permit before you redid it, we wouldn't be having this issue. But the real problem is that you didn't get the permit before you challenged them. Yeah, excuse me.
Fair question, Bill. Bill, the uh the motions are proven from an application. Does it need to be not from back to the date of the, uh when, before the painting started? Or can we do it um as of the application day two twenty-third? What would the date, what would the date be that uh Mr. Matthews, when they start painting, do you remember the date?
I have to look at it all for you and.
Was it in Jack, was it in? Was it at the beginning of February or was it?
It was February, but then um it's Matthew, it was January, it was in January, no matter.
It was, it had not started by January, correct?
The issue, I I think it was to try to get it done before. February.
I like saying. And we honor these people, there's heaven's goodness, so. The people that do the painting, it's honored. Yeah, you know, I'm not sure how many witnesses were there, but I'm gonna be there and and at that time, I thought it's.
But one thing that I just want to say is that when you, when you think about. The community itself, the area that it was. There was a sense of pride on Burton Avenue, which was. And just to to know that we see community pride, that that that's what it was. And usually, and sometimes it just depends that whoever. Commissioned a job also has their name, their work. That they commissioned, so Citizens in Action is the group that commissioned the group to do this, so. I I'm really revealing that, that I don't see where that would cause any problem. Because it's recognized the group that actually sponsored the mural. And then it's also showing that there's there's pride in that, in in that street. And what's what happened on that street, so, you know, I the. That's, even though they think that as a, as a street sign. It it really had some significance to what it is and whatever, you know.
And with that being said, you know, I I agree that 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 Birch Avenue is significant. Why not put Birch Avenue sign, so you know, really, you know, honor what was going on? Because I even when I was younger, I spent down down on Burton Avenue, Mr. Jesse Glover had a woman's supplier. Woman shop down there, I spent some time down there as well with Mr. Glover, so.
But these individuals here are richer. Yeah, so you didn't spend any time with anybody.
But that, and that's fine, that's not, that was the point of all that. Everything is, everything is in that street sign is is historical and is and is. That's right, and and like I said, to me, not anything wrong, any respect except what's on that sign. And that's not, it's not anywhere in South City. What would it take to change?
I'm not going to change that, it's over four thousand dollars there, you're not going to.
You couldn't just change the letters that are on the sign?
Sorry for this, no, I'm not even sorry, because we came to the time. And we asked, we don't. And the town said, no. You gotta have a little sprinkle of that brand every time. So that, you know, you're not even that. You wanna control what it is.
Well, we don't want to control it, but we have to have some kind of rules to go by. Because you just can't put anything in everything, that's what the whole thing about it being in the U D O. Well, I'm sorry, but that, you know, that's what it has to, for me, it has to be historical. And that's the first, now the rest of it's fine, and if you could just do something about that, something change for me on there, no problem. Alright, we got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Yeah, I think that's supposed to be already be underway into the town manual.
I guess I have it unread. From our papers, speak that now. In the beginning of our project. We had talked of everything made, so that you would have it on your file and everything. Nobody would say that we did not do certain things. If that had been instructed to us in the beginning, I'm sure that the artists would know and be interested. But none of that was written down and given to us in the sheets that I have talked of in my head. That said anything about what we had to do. So I'm saying, this conversation that we have right now is really irrelevant. Because the project is done, finished, and everything had been entered. Yes, it could be changed, it could have been changed when it began, it would have been taken out of the plan. But it did not say anything in the paper that you all gave me. Or the town manager at the time gave me and uh to say anything to that fit. So please, it comes up right now, it seems like it's a little bit out of order, and I have. No understanding of why we're talking about that, the project was finished.
Well, and and that's the reason we asked to get a permit for it, so it would come up, or it was done. And this was done before we got the permits, but that's neither here nor there now, so anyway. We got a motion, we got a second. Are we ready to vote, all those in favor of, I say aye, all those opposed like sign? Alright, motion carries. Alright, new business. Anything there? Yes.
The walking at the gems is part of seven. Is that correct? Is there, is there a reason why I can't be included, or is there something else that's off the team?
Uh so people, guys, they would say that it was.
Yeah, you won't work in.
Reminder, first budget worked out next Monday, that's. In this room, we'll have, we'll have dinner. Uh we discussed with our last meeting, uh we did the damages. Hasn't sit down, uh Ellen's been patchy and. Uh reached an agreement for the maximum of, I mean, we just got through this, we're like one one thousand. Uh we're currently waiting on the most money, uh A S P needs to get some track on items, we need to be paying first support. Uh I think we're clear, we're saying uh specific items, I know, for days that had to be voided in all of the courses. One of you know, from that, you know, uh we made a lot of progress. So as as we've understand it. The state was under the impression that all the equipment was already here, it's out of. It's out of the, we have to pay it to get it to them, but it may look a bit minimal.
And that, and, 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 oh, A O C system that was at, oh, where he thought it was the police department. You know, around the parking lot. Well, we don't say that, I apologize.
That's right.
So they thought that system was still here.
That's right.
So does it look, um, probable or a good shot that we'll be able to get something out? Because I know they've always scheduled, basically, for the beginning of June.
But a compatibility has to be very specific, so they, they have to be in their own network, have their own, I think, so, uh. They, they tell us exactly what we have to have, if any, so.
Well, I don't know, are we going to be able to get that in within the framework of the existing structure, because we made a lot of changes. Their rule was that, they don't, so, uh, the other thing. In the H, H B, H B, uh, H B, there. So what's the, do we have a plan for what we're having?
They're not, they're not in that same room, they're going to put it in the judges' chambers in the rack tied on the wall, so.
And they're a little involved to the.
But, but in the meantime, until they get that system put in, they're going to use wireless.
Wireless.
Yeah.
Do they, do, how long they can get the wire, wireless, and then do that?
We, they are, they use our wireless system.
Oh, I was, I'm really, I apologize.
Now, did they, or see, think that bill or?
Um, the, the A O C, um, they're going to send us a list of the details of what they want it, and then we, um, if our understanding that. We're supposed to order that and pay for that. And we don't know the list yet, so we can't tell you how much it's going to be, but we'll just, after we get the list and we get quotes on all of it. Then, you know, we can watch on that.
We did earmark twenty in the budget for their credit.
We did, uh, for wiring, but we don't know how much between this, since this is something new besides the cry system, because. So we don't know if, how much the cry system's going to cost either, so.
Well, I don't really want to, just to pay for all their, their hard work, I think we need to pay for the wiring. And then they gave, they gave us an estimate, everyone's gave more than estimate before.
Yeah. Yeah, but they already have that, she thought this stuff was here, so I think that's the other challenge, but, but we'll keep you up to date when we get the actual. List of stuff that they have to have.
And just staying on topic, you know, many times typically. It's fast, it's all about fast, chemical, you know.
Couple of, when they, a lot of files and drives and hires to police department. Uh, he has got that end to it, one truck at this point, so down sergeant and three fellow officers, which is. Dramatic, really, where we were two months ago, but clearly I have that information.
What's been the most effective improvement? So, Chief, maybe you can answer that.
I think the most important, that is, that approach that we're taking, um, with the improvement, sign all those. That should prove certified options, which we definitely need, you know, both sides of that, we need initiative. Uh, at the community colleges, which are, so I think both of them together, it was a, uh, a very competitive platform. That allows us to operate with the new systems a lot better. Actually. The creation of the points off the recruit, so we can hire them to go through, be able to leave and build them along. Even with the increase in pay. And like, you know, that free bill, see if that works, it's all the market, so. Uh, we, we moved ahead, we were doing this later, I think it's, building a group, our, the group that. Uh, also, uh, NeoGo, which is an HR platform used for dot applications, which are many dollars. Uh, marketing and advertising our positions and offers our online tool, we're filling out a pages out, it's fully live now. So any applications for positions in town will be done through the online system now, so to pay for application. Uh, we did it, our individuals that need conveys, we will make that available to them, but. NeoGo is known as the first year HR platform that both governments are using now, and it makes it easier for individuals to. Already can use that system to go fly for other dollars, I just don't believe in other agencies, so I think it. It makes it that much easier for people who are interested in working for solid city to fly for help, because it will. Uh, result in more applications for regular position.
Okay, and Turner.
Yeah.
Okay, good, good body company. I'm like, I got two. Uh. Mount Air is having, uh, the food, is it March Easter, March the thirty first. And it'll be down at the, the parking lot down there, at seven o'clock's the time, that's.
I believe you're attending.
Hey, oh, it must seem better, so I encourage anybody, all of you, you can, that's a pride, the present thirty first. That's a, if you can be there, some of the retirement, like, anybody can be there, go, this is very wonderful.
It's on profit?
Good, yeah. Eight, well. So if you can, participate, and while I'm on that, uh. Yeah. I don't know. And the other thing is, uh. I received an envelope from Mount Air today, we're all aware of the expenses that we incurred to, uh. For that, and something for you, I don't know what's in here, I didn't know. Anyway, I think, I think I know what it is, but thank you for the reimbursement of our law, uh, legal expenses. On the growth closure, so we appreciate that, working with them down there, they're good partners. And look forward to doing more of that in the future. Alright, anything else?
I'll make the motion, go on both seconds, two more, challenge stretch, one three, three eighteen, eleven eight six.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.